Hi Sarah.
Hi James, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Ready for spring to come.
I'm getting on a plane to Panama for 10 days in a few hours.
So nice.
So, but I'm coming back, we have a meeting on the 25th, correct?
Yeah, we also have one next week, you won't be at the regular one next week.
I'm not gonna be able to be that, didn't you see my email?
No.
I sent you an email mentioning that.
Okay.
But I will be here for the 40B, yeah.
Okay, great. Concerned about attrition for the 40B.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why I scheduled our plans around it.
You know, listen to some Van Halen while you're down there?
Jim? Well, that's the theme song, isn't it, John?
Sure is.
We're actually looking at Panama as a retirement community.
Hi Brian.
Hi Sarah, how are you?
Good. See, Jim is on. Looks like I'm looking for Sean and Catherine. Hi Jim.
Hi Sarah, I have a very tentative connection here, it took me a while to get the wifi up working, so I don't know how long this is gonna last, but
Okay, we need you.
What's that?
We need you so you don't miss a second meeting.
What happens if I do, you're gonna throw me off the board?
You can't vote.
You can't vote at all, never ever?
No, no, just for this public view.
Oh. I don't know, I may get, maybe I'll be bribed to stay off or something. You don't seem to be, I must be in the dark or something, I guess it's the sun shining in here.
Your face is half lit.
Yeah. Whether I can get to a better spot here.
That's better.
That might be better.
See Sean's connecting.
Jim, I'm glad to see you made your bed.
I'm sure you are, yes, yes, lovely.
Okay, I think that we'll go ahead and get started.
Hey Sarah, I am here.
Good, yeah, I saw you join, we're just waiting for Catherine, but I think we'll go ahead and start, I'm sure she'll be alone shortly. She has childcare issues sometimes. Um, it is 7:02 PM on May 11th, 2022, and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on the continued public hearing for the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General laws, chapter 40B, sections 20 to 23, construct 136 unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16th, 2021, at School Street, assessors map number 43, lot number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27th, 2021. And I think that we will start with the architectural peer review. We had at the initial architectural peer review meeting, Mr. Bomer and the board asked the applicant to provide depictions of what the building would look like from various vantage points. We were provided with a few from School Street. As most people know, the property is surrounded by conservation land with well-groomed trails used by hundreds of people. When someone's walking on a nature trail, they expect to see nature and not a building. This afternoon, I received a letter from the MECT Manchester Essex Conservation Trust reflecting before and after views from various locations on the trails. I want to thank them for hiring an architect to provide us with this additional information. I do request that in the future, any material sent by a third party come to the town, to me and Gail Hunter, and you let us distribute them to the applicant and the peer reviewers, because there was some confusion with respect to this communication. Gail Hunter, was Tiffany able to post this to the website under architecture?
It was, it is posted.
Okay, so for members of the public, we've posted these depictions on the 40B page of the town website under the architecture section, if you wish to look at them. Is there somebody from the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust who would like to speak to these pictures and depictions and kind of walk us through them? I can share my screen if that's helpful.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, why are we hearing from them before we hear from your own peer review consultant, Mr. Bomer on the architectural peer review?
Because I think that this information is important and we need Mr. Bomer to kind of weigh in on it and so it makes sense to discuss it first and then have Mr. Bomer react to it.
Okay, because we, we saw this information three hours ago and we have very, very strong, let's just say our position is this architect who is unnamed took great creative license and liberty to show things that we think are factually incorrect and a great misrepresentation, and I just want that stated for the record. We're not gonna be able to refute that specifically tonight, because we just got this three hours ago, but we'll happily show what they've shown and then what the reality is, because we actually used photographs in our renderings, we didn't use fabricated images that, you know, ignore topography and existing vegetation, but I'll be happy to have the trust present their images tonight, I'd be curious to know. They didn't indicate what architect prepared the images, I'd be interested to know that.
Right, and I think the purpose of tonight is to, to look at those images, see what appears to be views of the building from multiple locations and ask Mr. Bomer to weigh in and give maybe some suggestions of what would be done to make it less intrusive. Whether it's factually correct or not, it's still gonna be visible from the trails. Okay, is there somebody from MECT who can speak to this?
Madam Chair, I'm Patrice Murphy, the executive director, I would be happy to, can you allow me to share my screen, please?
I will. Yeah, you should be able to share it.
Okay, all right, so I presented these as side-by-side views, and this is a view from the Utopia Farms parking lot looking across School Street, just north of the Atwater intersection. I think the picture speaks for itself here.
So the left side is what's currently there and the right side is brown.
Yeah, so we have existing versus proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the side-by-side comparison really helps to see where the cuts and blasting and the end result of all of that clear cutting.
Okay.
Actually, I'm going to share a different screen here, I don't have the, I'll pick this just a moment. Here we have a view looking down School Street at the
We can't see it.
Oh.
We still have the, the original one.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was not expecting to go so early in the presentation, so just bear with me for a second.
Me need to stop sharing and then share again.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask through you who the architect is that prepared these images?
Sure, Ms. Murphy, can you?
We've decided not to reveal that information, we don't want any pressure on this architect from any outside firms, and at this point, we are not required to provide that information.
Okay. Whoops, we just lost it.
Yeah. This view is approximately from the kiosk located on Old School Street, School Street intersection, looking across the small triangular area to the north of the project. Okay, I'm gonna try that stop screen, start screen here. And this if the screen change for you, this is southbound on School Street as you approach the parking lot from, for the Manchester Essex Wilderness Conservation Area. And that is all the screenshots that I have prepared to present this evening in the side-by-side, yeah.
Okay, now we, we received some additional ones that were from Millstone Hill.
Yes.
And from the Monolith.
Yes.
Who members of the board have that, know what we're talking about?
Yes, I just had not assembled those side-by-side, we were not expecting to present this evening.
Okay. Unfortunately, we're running out of time, so we have to do as much as we can each night.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Bomer. I will give the floor to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start by saying that I, like others, are seeing the, these new renderings for the first time this afternoon. And I, I think maybe I'll start my review by saying that I see the, you know, having people really concerned about the view from the public realm is I think a highlight of my first review letter, March 21st, and I think is notes the same concern and appreciation for some movement in that direction in my May 6th letter. I think from my perspective, as I noted in my letter back in, in March, and, and I think affirmed in, in May, is that the purpose of creating those kinds of renderings is really, it's not a sales tool at this stage in the development of a design, these designs are schematic. Everybody wants to know what it's going to look at, look like, and in this case, because it is a very large development, it's uncharacteristic. For Manchester, certainly my focus was the view from the public realm. So I, I view these images, whether they're produced by the project architect or whether they're produced by other town stakeholders, neighbors, whomever they might be. At this stage of development, I view those as tools in refining the design of the development. So I just want to put that out there, that this is not a fully designed project, there have been some iterations of various plans, including landscape plans. And in my opinion, the, the developer clearly, as do I, need time to, to really think about these plans and, and think about the verity of these plans. That makes a lot of sense, and nobody's had a lot of time to think about it, but I view them as tools and as a mechanism, I hope, for engaging with the development team to make sure at the end of the day, that everybody's happy with those views or if not happy, at least having participated in what those views might end up as, as the project, if the project is ultimately permitted and proceeds. So I think I'll, I'll stand back on really commenting on the images that I saw today, other than I didn't actually see a lot of differences as far as how the actual earth works, and by earth works, I mean the, the views of retaining walls, they appear to be consistent, particularly from near the driveway entry, there was a difference. The applicant's views were not from five foot six off of grade, they were a higher view up. But if you look at the kind of perspectival change that would happen with the retaining walls as well as the building, it was consistent with that vantage point being at different levels. So I didn't really, from the amount of time I've had to really look at them, I didn't see huge differences. The big difference is obviously, and, and I, I think I can put those behind us at this point, because I think that the developer needs to look at them, all of us need to look at them more thoughtfully. But I think the big message is that I think the developer has taken it very seriously. The concern that people have of the, of the view of this development from the public realm, and I think getting those images today really affirmed that, that there are a lot of people concerned about that. And I hope that the developer will take to heart that level of concern. I will say that in, in my letter, my revised letter of May 6th, and I, I hope you all know, I'm sure the board all knows, but I hope the public all knows that my letter of May 6th is based on documents that were submitted, revised documents that were submitted after I wrote that letter on March 21st, I reviewed 20, I think it was 20 additional documents that have been submitted, counting today would be 21 new documents that have been submitted, so I think in order to fully understand my comments of tonight, I hope people have availed themselves of all of that material that's been submitted over the last several weeks. I think the big issues for me back in March, there were two big issues, we've hit on one of them already, which is the view of the development from the public realm. I want to talk about that a little bit, in the sense that, in my opinion, I think as an architect, and I think as people who like to look at buildings, that the strategy isn't always, is the building completely invisible from the public realm, but is the building framed in a way that it fits into the public realm? And I think that applies whether it's a two-family home on a small residential street or a large-scale development that has multiple perspectives. So I just want to be clear about that, that my opinion was never and isn't that the building should be, or would have to be totally screened from the public realm. My concern is more that it makes sense in where it sits, that it really makes sense with context. And we did see in the new materials, there were renderings. I, I requested specific renderings, those were responded to. And I, I, it's not surprising that there may be other parties who would like to see other perspectives. And I, I hope the developer will be responsive to them and understand that that really does mean a lot to other people, even though it wasn't something that I specifically cited in my letter. So I appreciate the movement in that direction, that there has been, from what I could tell, actually carefully drawn perspectives by the applicant's architect. Again, their perspectival view is a little bit different from the images that just came in today, but they did appear accurate, they appeared coordinated with the civil drawings that really established the height of the retaining walls, and they did appear to be coordinated with the landscape drawings, as well as some small elements, including a covered bus stop at the entry point of the development. I did note in my letter, and I think they're important points, and I think if, if we can continue this discussion about the perception of the development from the public realm, I hope the developer will take those to heart and integrate those changes into their view. There were a number of them, at least one of them was picked up in the images I saw today, that was an overhead power line. I think there are other, other important points that will both help the, help the developer come to the right solution on the views from the street, but also satisfy the public's need to understand what's coming, and certainly the boards' need to understand what they may be approving. So I appreciate the movement in that direction, I see today's submission from the trust as working in that same direction. I'll anticipate a little bit of what Mr. Engler may say. It is important to note that there was no representation in those drawings made today, that there was inclusion of proposed landscaping materials. That is really important point. I think what you're seeing in the images today is a project that hasn't been touched by the landscape architect yet. And I think, actually, my letter kind of pushes that point forward, I think if, if proper screening is the direction, or well-balanced screening is the direction to push this development, I think at this point, a lot of it is in the hands of the landscape architect, and I would hope that their landscape architect would have access to these drawings and really think about all of these perspectives. The other big change in the, other than some additional views, the other really significant, excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold, so pardon me for drinking. The other really big change in my mind, my letter of March 21st pushed pretty hard on what I consider to be inadequate usable outdoor space. There was some outdoor space, but in my opinion, it was far from adequate, given the size of the development combined with the somewhat isolated aspect of the development, and I went into some level of detail and repeated it probably two or three times in my last letter. That has been a very big change, and that was facilitated, as you know, at least all the ZPA members know, that the development connecting to a municipal sewer connection made a huge difference in two ways, two very important ways, one is it did provide the opportunity for more usable outdoor space on site, although I do point out in the letter, it did require construction of some additional retaining walls to create a space that's flat enough to really be programmable. But it also, it, in the initial submission, there was a large area on the, on the otherwise undeveloped area of the site that had to be cleared for, for infiltration areas that is no longer necessary. So it does provide the opportunity for actually a large area of undisturbed space that didn't exist before. So in my mind, those were really significant changes in the development. I think what's missing, there are a number of things, and I do highlight them in the letter, and I'm happy to respond to questions or go into greater detail as required. I think the, the programming for that open space, we don't quite know how big it is, I made a guess, I think I guessed that 30,000 square feet on that programmable space. We don't really know what the program is, I think it was called out as nature-oriented open space, I think the details matter of how that space might be programmed. Probably another, I think important part, it needs to be integrated into the, into the renderings as well as the site drawings. I, I don't see the accessible path down to Summer Street. I, I don't see the accessible path down to Summer Street as optional. It, I think the only way the developer would really legitimately not provide that path would be through a variance process with the Architectural Access Board. I think, let me see if there are other highlights here. I already mentioned the programming on space. I think that matters. Know a little bit more about that. I think it would be good to know, I would suggest that if, if we're able to continue to push ahead on getting accurate views from the public realm, I did suggest that, that the development team with their landscape architect survey existing, where in any case where existing landscape materials are relied on for mitigating the view or really seeing the scale of the building, if not blocking it. I did suggest that they survey the existing vegetation. And if there would be a huge change in that view, consider expanding their landscape plan to improve, to include improvements to existing areas of landscaping. What, oh, another one that matters, I think, and I think the renderings, whether they were the ones we saw today or the ones that were provided by the developer, I do think the, that turnaround area is a particularly visible part of the development. So I did suggest in, in my letter that while there are pole-mounted light fixtures that make a lot of sense as you go up the driveway to the development, I would consider a different type of lighting at that turnaround. I think unless, unless that is considered, given the height of that part of the site and 20-foot pole-mounted fixtures, I don't think it will do the development a lot of good. And I think it, it's unnecessary, given that it's not a part of the site that's really a programmed part of the site other than for cars to turn around or to enter the parking, the parking garage. So it suggests really cutting back on the lighting in that part to minimize the impact at night. There are a number of other detailed comments in my letter that haven't really changed. It's not unusual that some of these other issues would come in later on. For example, the number of EV spaces on the site. I think that is a really good thing to know. It is a site that is going to be heavily reliant on automobiles. And we all know that electric fuels, electric vehicles are the way it's going. Keyed with that is the detail TDM. I think that's our Transportation Demand Management Program. I know this developer has certainly worked on multiple projects that create some really effective plans. And I think this is one that really needs it. Otherwise, maybe I should leave it there. Again, I, I certainly offer my services, even though I can't opine on it right now at, at looking at those new views that came in today. But I think that the important thing for everybody to keep in mind is that whomever the architect is who prepared those did not provide existing land or proposed landscaping in those renderings. So I'm hoping that we can all look at it that way, that essentially, maybe this is the way it would look if there were no landscaping proposed in this development. That isn't the case. There is landscaping proposed. And I hope that the developer's landscape architect can use these images as a tool to get to a point that, that really is satisfactory for multiple parties. So I'll, I'll leave it at that unless, or I'm open to questions. Again, I submitted this report, I think, six days ago, or five days ago. So not, maybe not everybody's had time to, to look at it.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And I'm looking at the depiction from the applicant at the drive entry. And there were just kind of two things that came to mind. Number one, the building looks awful white to me. And I'm wondering if there can't be materials used, so it doesn't stick out as much. The other thing I was wondering is, I expect that there's going to be between 350 and 450 people living on the top of this hill based on the number of bedrooms. And one of the concerns all along has been the single driveway down. And when I look at this picture, I wonder is, is there any way that a staircase could be built down from that turnaround down to the school streets, the left of the retaining walls? It looks like there's space. And I, I don't know if that type of thing is feasible, but it might at least give people a second way out.
You know, it's interesting you bring that up is the, one of the points I brought up in my original letter was helping create a sense of connectivity with the community. And certainly a gesture like that matters. I think the issue with that would be that it, in no way is a substitute for a truly accessible path up to the development. So I think at the end of the day, in most cases, the, the preferred course is really provide the same pathway for, for able-bodied people as well as people who, who may be, you know, who may have some disabilities. So I, I understand what you're saying. But I, I think the, from, from my perspective, I think advancing the design of an accessible pathway to the top is, is probably the, the best way to go.
I was thinking of having both.
Well, then, I, that is possible. And I think that is, that would be acceptable from the Architectural Access Board. But I guess I'd put that one out to the developer.
Other members of the board, do you have questions of Mr. Bomer? James Mitchell?
Yes, I have several questions and observations, and I'll try to be brief in the interest of time. And these are responses to the March 21st letter that the architect has prepared. And I do want to say, I think he did an exceptional job reviewing and analyzing what's been presented. The first one is in section one. And it talks about the developer has stated that he's going to reuse and redistribute most of the cut and fill material on site. Yet we still don't have a lot of clarity on that. So that's the first thing. The second thing in section five on pages two and three, the developer has, because they're eliminating the wastewater treatment plant, they have added play space and open space. And I think that's a very positive development. As Cliff, the architect, has just mentioned, there really is no actual programming for that space. So that needs some more clarity. The sidewalk issue that has been a concern for many, my understanding is that the developer will build the sidewalk if the town builds one on School Street. And we've discussed that before. The third section is regarding, it's section C on page four, accommodating unforeseen conditions and the issue of slack, with a lack of slack. And I think this has been addressed by the elimination of the wastewater treatment plant. So that's a positive development. The next couple of things here, section four on page, section F, pages five and six, there has been more detail provided for bike and storage space and for school bus accommodation. So that's a good thing. The fifth thing I wanted to mention in sections I and L on pages six and seven, sustainability is really not addressed here. And things that could be included for consideration are photovoltaic, solar, addressing the building's stretch code, energy efficiency. These are all examples of opportunities that either should or could be addressed. And wrapping up here on page seven, there's some excellent suggestions by the architect for design-related concerns. And those include car-sharing spaces, a detailed transportation demand, demand management program, preliminary construction management plan, the cut and fill quantities I mentioned earlier, some integration of universal design features. The developer should provide an evacuation plan. And they should also provide additional details for retaining walls. The last thing I wanted to talk about was section N, and that's on page eight. And it talks about the concern that this site is really isolated from the rest of the community. And there was some request that perhaps there could be expanding integration into the community and addressing the accessing the downtown Manchester area other than by car. So those issues were not really addressed so far. Those, those are my observations and, and remarks.
Thank you, James.
And I'm, thank you very much for that. Can I make a brief response?
Sure.
Thank you, because you spared me having to go through in detail, because I do want to emphasize that there, there remain many questions. And you've hit on a lot of them, and I appreciate it. And they are in the letter. I did, I'll hit on a couple of them or reemphasize a couple of them. Maybe most importantly, given, certainly from the aspect of the view from the public realm, is more information about the materiality of the retaining walls. And I think whether you're looking at the arc, the project architects or the, the trust architect, it's very clear that the retaining walls are really a huge visual element of this development. The, the developer does say that they are, I don't remember exactly the language, but that they're considering providing material. I think that is really important, certainly every bit is important. In this case, actually more important than what the building is sited in or what color the building is. The walls are really the first thing you see. They lead you into the development. And knowing what that material is, is critical. The, the cut and fill, the developer did acknowledge, I haven't done a full cut and fill analysis and hoping that that will, that analysis will happen. The primary reason being that it does give everybody a good understanding of the kind of truck traffic that is generated by that. I, I want to reemphasize that, that play space, that open space, understanding more about the programming, the slack space. I, I wanted to clarify my use of that term. I think the reason that the elimination of the, of the onsite septic treatment plant did create slack space was now there is slack space to deal with stormwater. And there's, there's just a lot more area on the site to deal with both programming issues and stormwater, which is really the only water issue they're dealing with now. Sustainability, I think that is something that's in everybody's best interest, certainly the community's best interest. And I would hope, I know the architecture firm that's working on this, and I know they're capable of integrating really meaningful sustainability components in the project. Lastly, the evacuation plan. I, I didn't re-comment on that, I don't think, in my revised letter. And the reason was that, to me, that is the fire department's issue and the degree to which the, I think I said that the developer had, had represented that they'd met multiple times with the fire department. And certainly, the push, if there is a push for an evacuation plan, that's really not an architectural issue, but keeping the fire department in the loop. And if that is something that is required, I think the board should push for that.
Thank you. John Benares, do you have any questions, comments?
I think we've touched on a lot of items thus far. I appreciate your analysis, Mr. Bomer. One of my questions is regarding your, your letter with your responses. Is that considered final form? Or are we expecting another letter that we can, that will sort of whittle down these outstanding items that are more, I suppose, acknowledgements than additional requests from, from you? And also, I'd just like to add that these renderings just reaffirm that the scale of this project and how there's nothing like that, this, in, in our town. And it also reaffirms just the isolated nature of the project. So I just, you know, wanted to point that out. That was my initial reaction after seeing these renderings. And, you know, I'm used to seeing renderings in, in my career. And so I, I knew that it would, you know, look out of character for the area, but it actually had more of an impact than I thought it would on me. So I'd like to just point that out. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Bomer.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. And I hope it's not the end of the line. And I think, as I said at the beginning, the, these new renderings that we got today, as well as the renderings that were provided by the applicant, I think can really help all of us engage in, in really being able to review this project in, in, you know, in a realistic way. So like I said at the beginning, I, I think that there may be some views that the developer hadn't really anticipated that clearly are of importance to, to some of the citizenry. So I, I, I view this as an opportunity for the, for the developer, in my opinion, mainly to really engage with their landscape architect and make sure they've got, they have sufficiently really run through the issues for everybody. Typically, just so you know, typically what I do do when I advise boards is as the project continues to develop, and we hope that we have a responsive developer who will continue to develop, I eventually boil down my comments to things that could, could turn into conditions on an approval or, you know, we hope advance design ideas that make sense to you folks. So no, I don't see this as the end. This isn't a final report. I hope that we're very much, all of us are very much engaged in, in advancing the design of this development.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm going to hold on questions until I hear the applicant's response to some of the comments that Mr. Bomer made. But I do have one comment in, in keeping with what John said. There's nothing like this in Manchester. There's actually nothing like this on KPN, for the three towns on KPN. This is totally out of character for the character of KPN. And so with that, I'll just wait to see what Mr. Engler has to offer. Thank you.
Jim Dietrich, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Adam Schirr. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm having a terrible time with this. I wanted to express my thanks to Mr. Bomer, or Mr. Bomer for the work that he did. And also to the people, was it Manchester Essex Conservation, for providing us the material that, which they did. It's very interesting. It certainly points out that we will have a much better idea of what this will look like when it's completed. It may not be perfect. And, but I didn't hear anyone say, or didn't hear Mr. Bomer say, And, but I didn't hear anyone say, or didn't hear Mr. Bomer say that, uh, it did not fairly represent what anyone would see. Maybe some additional trees and things like that would be, would soften the look. But I didn't hear anyone say that it was grossly wrong. And if I, if I need to be corrected, I would appreciate being corrected on that matter. Other than that, I will hold my comments until the applicant has had his turn to comment. Thank you.
Uh, Sean?
No, sir. I think everything's been pretty well, um, covered so far. Uh, just thank you to Mr. Bomer for all that he's done on this.
Okay. Uh, Catherine?
Um, I don't, I don't have a lot to add. I just, um, would, I guess, agree with everyone else about, um, what the points have been made about the sort of, the character of the structure. And actually, the views that were most striking to me were the views from some of the conservation areas that actually weren't shown on screen tonight. Um, uh, those were impactful for me personally. Um, the other thing that I think is important, and I, I know it's been mentioned, but I, I think it's, um, worth reiterating is, is that the sidewalks, I think, um, an accessible pathway, sidewalk, accessible pathway for walking down, um, is going to be a really important part of this, this project.
Thank you. Mr. Angler?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in general, relative to Mr. Bomer's comments, we, we certainly appreciate his thoroughness and diligence. Um, we, we, to Mr. Benares's point, we expect to issue, um, by next week, responses to Mr. Bomer's comments, uh, and, and some cases, some additional details. Uh, frankly, the, I don't think there's a ton of outstanding information in Mr. Bomer's letter. There's certainly some things that we can provide some additional details on and clarifications. And, uh, we intend to do so. Um, so we will be submitting a formal response to Cliff's letter, uh, directly embedded, um, in the responses that he's, that he's made. Um, so we, we agree and, and look forward to, uh, continuing that, that, uh, communication. Um, we've worked with Cliff several times and, um, you know, look forward to, uh, um, I mean, ultimately, as Cliff would acknowledge, there, there are parts of the plan that are not going to be developed during this public hearing process. They're just not. But as Cliff said, you know, conditions that those details would be subject to a building permit, I, I'm fairly confident and comfortable saying that he would be comfortable in, in some areas anyway, with some of those details being deferred, because they're just, they're not known, nor will they be known, uh, about this project in the next couple of months. Um, with that said, uh, I'm not really going to get into the representations, uh, made by, the MECT. You know, I, candidly, I find it a little bit inconsistent where we as the applicant, and I get it, are brow-beaten when we don't submit material far enough in advance. But the MECT continually submits material the day of the hearing, providing us no opportunity to review it. It, it seems inconsistent. Moreover, our technical team is scrutinized, as it should be, by the peer review consultants that you have. But the MECT can just submit whatever they want and everybody takes it as gospel. I, 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 I don't, you know, it just, once again, it seems inconsistent. Moreover, I was asking who the architect was, not so that we would harass him. I mean, that would be about as unprofessional and unethical as one could do simply to know what kind of credentials do they have. Does that seem like an, in, an inappropriate request? To see who presented these and what their credentials are? Have they worked on any other projects? Have they done renderings before? So, we, we, I stand on our, that they've taken creative liberties in what they're showing. I'll have my team tonight show the three renderings that we prepared that were done painstakingly based on existing photographs without any enhancements or removal of existing vegetation or change in topography or any of those things that I believe were done in the renderings that were submitted to you today. So, you know, a lot of the things that we heard from Mr. Bomer will, will provide and we look forward to continuing the, the conversation. I, I think with that said, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to, to Leslie from Bowler, who's our landscape architect, who can screenshot. If, if, if it pleases the board, would you like us to talk about the package that we submitted in the renderings or is that unnecessary and you just want to ask us some questions?
No, you can go over the package. I mean, I think we've looked at it, um, and I, you know, I, I, I think the biggest thing that stuck out with me was B2. Because the building that's there, the colors are not the same as what I saw on the other pages. It's all white.
Well, well, let, let me comment on that. I mean, listen, we can make the building whatever color you want. We had a gray building last year and we were pushed to do a white building by all the people that attended the public hearings and the board of selectmen process. So we dramatically changed the exterior facade and made it a white building. If the board wanted more gray or beige or something like that, we, you know, we, we, we're not opposed to that. What we showed you is, is, um, is what we were kind of encouraged to do. Second of all, relative to, you know, just more globally at a high level, we recognize this building as large for Manchester by the Sea. We, we do. But for a hundred and thirty-six unit, three and a half story building, it's about as invisible for most of Manchester by the Sea or the passersby as possible. And I would ask council or the members of the board to show me anywhere in any 40B case lot where a town is under 10% objectively that, oh, we don't like the building or we can see the building or people walking on a path can see the building. That does not carry the day. It just doesn't. So we feel very comfortable with the building as we've designed it. If there are some, you know, changes in color, additional landscaping, uh, providing more details on the exterior programming, would, would, would be happy to do that. But if, if the board is looking for us to make dramatic changes to what we've presented, just candidly, we're not going to be doing that. So, um, I don't know. So without me rambling on anymore, Leslie, why don't you screen share and show, um, the landscaping plan? So people can see the, the additional programmable space. And then let's focus a little bit on the last three renderings and you and Bill can talk about, uh, and talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Jeff. So this is a rendering of the landscape plan. And, um, I think what I'll do is just kind of go around the site, starting down at School Street. I know that there's been a lot of, uh, conversation about the retaining walls and the style of retaining wall that you'll see from School Street. Um, so I'm hopefully going to share my, can you see that?
Yes.
You can. Okay. So this is what we envision, um, as being the style of retaining wall. Uh, this is, um, a readily available type of retaining wall. And it's got some nice style to it that is kind of reminiscent of a granite, um, block wall in an Ashlotters style. Um, there's another, a less, um, granular type of retaining wall with a smaller block style. Um, this is something that's been installed up at a, a new elementary school in, uh, Marblehead, if you're interested in taking a look at it. Um, so I think, uh, Jeff and the team is, is open to suggestions relative to the, the style between these, you know, uh, more large block style versus a smaller block style. And, and both can go to, to the heights that we need for the, the project. All right. So I just want to add, um, you know, we've got lots of retaining walls for the sole purpose of retaining existing vegetation that occurs along School Street. There's a very narrow gap that allows a view into the site, particularly when you're driving, um, I think it's, uh, sort of southwest down School Street. You'll get sort of a narrow view between the existing trees. And that view, um, I think we've all seen the, um, architect's renderings. Let me just share that as well. Um, so this is, uh, a view of the building as you are, are looking across School Street from, uh, I think it's at, at Water Road. And you'll notice that we've got quite a lot of existing vegetation on this side. This will all be meadow grass. It won't be just a lawn. Um, it'll have a very natural feel on the top. Got lots of, uh, shrubs that will soften the look of the retaining wall terraces and proposing, you know, things that kind of drape over it. And over time will really help to soften the look of, um, this vertical wall. At the top of the, the slope, we're proposing these, uh, arborvitae trees. And the reason for that is that there's, um, you know, a slope that comes up and it's coming off of the, let me, uh, go back to the the plan. So in this area, you know, the slope starts right off the edge of the turnaround. And there's, uh, a narrow level area that's available for planting trees. So the selection of these arborvitae's that are very fast-growing, they're very hardy. They create a great green wall and over time will get to be thirty to forty feet tall. Uh, they're quite, quite large. And then we're also enhancing the, the screening from School Street by adding some more conifer-type trees, um, that are located in an area where there's more level spot. And that combines with the existing vegetation with that in the background. It really helped to kind of, um, soften the look toward the developed area of the site. As we're, uh, going up towards, um, Old School Street, this is the conservation area. And we completely understand how sensitive the view from this valuable open space resource is. And we've, uh, proposed on the landscape plan to, um, show that, to add evergreen trees and conifer trees and, and place them strategically such that we're, we're reducing the view up this hill, uh, toward the site and toward the building. So if you're a, a person walking along, you're at most, you know, six feet tall, let's say. Uh, the combination of the existing vegetation, these proposed evergreen trees, you're really not going to see, through all of the existing vegetation and the trees up through, um, to the site. I really can't speak, uh, like Jeff said, to some of the images that were shown, um, or prepared by the other architect, um, of these recent views. But we'll certainly take a look at what the view could be from those similar vantage points and uh, really work to mitigate any, uh, impacts from those views that we, in, in ways that we can control. We can only control, um, the site. We can't really control what's off the site. See. So as you're coming up the site, uh, the previous wastewater treatment area has been repurposed, uh, because we're connecting to town sewer. And as, as, uh, Mr. Bowman had mentioned, we've got a retaining wall that's quite high. And that, um, there's a, a fall protection fence on the top of the retaining wall. And one of, um, Mr. Bowman's comments was that really feels we need to extend that fall protection to where this, uh, slope occurs on either side. So we're happy to do that. Uh, another comment that he made was that, you know, people are kicking a ball around and it goes over the fence, then, uh, at a, at a four-foot height, that might happen easily. Um, typical playground fence heights are around six feet. So, um, I'm sure developer would be happy to increase the, the size of that fence to make sure that, um, we're reducing the likelihood of balls kind of falling out of the play area. Uh, as of now, we're really just keeping this as a multi-use open space for people just to kick a ball around or, uh, be out in the sun. Haven't taken it too much further than that at this point, um, but certainly will be considering other amenities that, uh, development like this would, would want to have, uh, nearby their, their homes. And, uh, the other addition since the initial, um, submission was the addition of a, uh, play space for the younger children. And again, we haven't, um, gotten any, into any real detail, but we are committed to doing something that has a nature theme, given the abundance of nature that surrounds this site and will continue to surround the site, um, for, forevermore. And we want to kind of tie that theme into play spaces and, um, allow, uh, kids to learn from, from that.
Leslie, will you, will you highlight the access, um, from the building to both, at both areas? Cause I think that was something Mr. Bomer had mentioned in his letter.
Sure, yeah. Um, so this, this walkway coming out the west side of the building is the accessible route to the play area. And that's, that's been proposed right from the start. And there's a little gate right here and then there's, uh, a double gate, uh, allowing for maintenance or emergency access coming up the, the grass pavers. Um, additionally, uh, the initial, um, site design had the sidewalks stopping at, come back, there we go, uh, stopping it at the end of the parking lot. Um, since the initial submission, we've extended the walkway, we've added, uh, curb ramps. The other curb ramp isn't shown on, on this rendering, but, and a crosswalk that gets us over to the multi-use open space area. Um, see, some other comments that, uh, Mr. Bomer had, had made were, you know, increasing the number of bike racks. We've added some bike racks right at the main entry. And, um, some, uh, concern was stated in the review comments of, you know, uh, having some sort of buffering between the units and the, uh, amenity space. So where we aren't currently showing the specific plant materials, we have always intended to have, uh, plant materials at, that are either, um, in planters and provide plants that get up a little bit higher and then plant materials that would be between the amenity space and the, the decks.
And something Leslie just to add on that would probably be, would be that we'll continue to study an architectural privacy screen as well to help shield, give a little bit of a bu, additional buffer between the, the units at that level and the pool.
Right. Thanks, Phil. Let's see. Think that that covers most of the comments, um, that we received. Again, um, I, I will continue to, uh, look at those views that are concerned, you know, going from places outside of the site toward the site and see if there are ways that we can, uh, increase the, the screening, uh, between those sensitive receptor areas.
Leslie and, and Bill, I mean, it's safe to say, as this image shows, that passes by on School Street, um, unless you're right in front of the building or the driveway access, because of all the existing vegetation and the change in topography, you're, you're really not going to see anything. I mean, I want to go to our last two renderings, which are much further down the street, but, yeah, right there, if you're, if you're past our site in either direction, and right there, I mean, what, what's somebody going to see?
Yeah, you'll just see the retaining walls.
Right. Looking at an angle.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, this is a little, um, also a little deceptive, because it, it, it has a, an elevated view where you'll really be looking up toward the building and, um, the, the angle that you'll be looking up, you'll have all of this layering of topography and vegetation. And you probably won't see, um, the second and first floors.
Well, may, maybe what we'll do is we can look at what somebody, you know, I mean, because we're kind of across the street on the hill.
Right.
Um, I think what we'll do is we'll try to show a representation of what somebody on School Street will see.
Yeah, approaching.
Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Yeah, I was thinking Jeff, that maybe a view as they're approaching this sort of narrow viewport that opens up.
Yeah.
Right. So if you're coming a little bit closer, there's, it's gonna, it's sort, it's, there's gonna be a quick moment. If you're in a car, you know, that, that you're going to get a glimpse that of all the walls, so.
And, and on those two images, Leslie, if you, if you move back and Bill's pinch hitting tonight for, for our primary project architect who's been involved from jump, but I, I can say that these two images are photographs. They're not, they're not rendered images. They are photographs, actual photographs that we've taken our building and based on existing topography. All right. And how our building will sit on the site, that is what will be seen from School Street further down in the parking area. Can you go to the next one? And that, that's what we'll be seeing from the entrance to the, to the trail. But once again, those are existing photographs. There are no creative license taken in the preparation of that.
Can I ask a question on page A201 of the architect?
Leslie, can you go back to that?
Which one?
A201, I think.
A201. Eight. There we go. Okay.
Yeah. When I look at that, it looks to me like there's additional height on top of the roof. And I thought the roof was maybe twenty-five feet. Does that other stuff on top of the roof raise it over thirty-five feet?
By other stuff, do you mean the roof deck?
I, I don't know what's up there. There's.
The head house.
That, that's a roof, a roof deck amenity for the residents of the building. That won't be seen by anybody anywhere. It's buried on the back of the building.
Except very back, far back.
I'm talking with respect to the waivers for zoning where we have a thirty-five foot height restriction. I'm asking with that stuff on top of the roof, are you going over thirty-five feet?
That does not count towards the building height area unless they were habitable. Outdoor, the outdoor space doesn't count with a stair up to the room if there were, if there were a.
You've got walls, don't you?
Yeah, there's, there's wa, there's walls up there. We'll revisit, we'll revisit.
So you can just look at that again and see what, whether you need a waiver from the thirty-foot height.
So I think that we just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the architectural and landscaping elements. We'll update some of the, some of the plans based on Mr. Bomer's comments. The, the main image that we show from the street that does look, the hill does look like it was sodded. Like it was, it's just like big green grass. That's, that's not representative to what it's going to be. It's going to be more seagrass and, and organic, that area there. That looks like lawn. So we'll, we'll continue to update this image to make sure that it's representative of what our landscaping plan shows. And, and Leslie, as Mr. Bomer recommended, we'll continue to, you know, look at the plan to see if there's any other enhancements we may be able to introduce. So with that said, if the board has any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Can I ask a question? It's John.
Go ahead.
This is for Leslie. Have you considered other plantings besides the arborvitae's? I just feel like they're very linear and, you know, by the time they grow to twenty or thirty feet, that's going to be, you know, the twenty years from now. And if, let's say if one dies ten years from now, then, you know, they typically grow at the same time. But then if one dies, it's, it's hard to replace that plant and have it look, you know, consistent with the landscaping. So I'm just curious if you've considered other plantings that grow larger, like maples or dogwoods or birch trees or, or, you know, just larger trees would provide also a, a better screen and grow larger. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah. I think for the purposes, the reason that those were selected was for their screening, their quick screening ability. Like you, you can, you can have a green wall on day one because of the way that they're planted. And the other reason they were selected, I think I mentioned earlier, was that it, there's kind of a narrow level space for, for planting at, at that area. If we were to try to push the slope out to create more of a level area, then we might need another wall. So we're, we're. Honestly, I really didn't think of any other plants because this one fit the needs so well. But where I did have opportunity to plant more conifers type, you know, like Christmas tree type trees for, for buffering, I, I did take advantage of that. I think I showed in the previous plan. Yeah. So right, right in here. You can kind of see, I'll just zoom in a little bit and you can appreciate the, you know, here's, here's the slope. Top of wall here, the slope comes up and there's just this narrow level area before you end up at the, at the curve. There, there could be some opportunity to do some, you know, deciduous trees. We do have a fairly large deciduous tree planned for the center court or the center of the turnaround. Which will, you know, you'll see over the top of these arborvitae's. And if we can create any planting pockets that allow for some additional deciduous trees, which, you know, they kind of, they lose their leaves in the winter. So they aren't as, you know, a single tree as effective as a long hedge of evergreens.
Right. I was going to suggest if you, if you could consider incorporating some trees within that top portion of that meadow area, just to soften that meadow and, and, and help conceal the structure from, from School Street.
Okay. Sure. We'll take a look at it. Maybe swap out some of the evergreens for deciduous.
Or even putting some in the open spaces. With the, the grass.
In here.
Yeah, just to break it up so it looks more natural.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think in the representation we do, I think you're going to see that it is more natural. I mean, I think what we showed was, you know, as I said, it, it kind of represented as sod. Looks like a golf airway. But keep in mind, because of the slope, plantings on that hill are not going to have any impact. Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, from a screening basis. I mean, it may make that area a little bit more visually interesting, which we can consider. But from a screening standpoint, what, what we plant on, on that hill, right? Like where Leslie's hand is, that's not going to have an impact on our screen in comparison to the arborvitae's that are planted at a much higher grade and thus have more impactful as our, as our image shows.
Yeah, I, I just find it adds some more visual layers to, to the view. Understanding that there, there is a slope, of course. And I, I find that arborvitae's work well in like, in small residential applications. But when you have, it looks like you have a couple dozen of them wrapping around that turnaround. You're really relying on all them to thrive at the same time and, and, and grow at the same rate and all that. And I just find that maybe, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, when you start seeing some of them die off, it, it will look a little goofy for lack of a better term. And if you see that around, you drive around, you see that at, you know, other places in people's houses. So just a thought that I had.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thought would be to use, the concern with planting larger deciduous trees on slopes is that, you know, you, you have the slope coming down and then you're trying to plant a tree in the slope and kind of the whole thing sticks out. So one, one thing we've done before is to plant much smaller trees that over time that they grow and they, they prosper. But they don't have the same challenge of planting on a slope. It's, it's the big hoop ball that makes the challenge. So planting, you know, liners along the slope, which are, you know, maybe half inch to, to, to an inch caliber. Then they grow over time, almost like successional growth, which, which will occur naturally as, you know, this meadow grass grows. Birds drop, you know, seeds and trees grow and so forth. So it's giving, you know, that a head start with the smaller trees is a possibility.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Right. I just want to echo what John and you both said. I'd like to see a lot of that meadow area return more back to what the existing state was with a mixture of deciduous and coniferous trees in there. I think would soften the entire look and takeaway. Because right now it just looks like one flat piece of land going up to a flat building. And I think that if we add some trees into there and, and try to integrate it back into what was, it'll take a curse off the entire site. Just my comment.
Thank you.
Sarah, I don't know if you can see Mr. Bomer's hand.
Oh, no, I can't. Mr. Bomer?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to support what the three of the board members have said. And it is in my latest letter that I, I think there are multiple reasons. And Leslie, if you wouldn't mind going to the view from the street, that perspective view from the street. I think it kind of supports that. If you can imagine, not on day one, but in that we hope not too distant future, that the kind of scale of trees that we see in that existing buffer on the left-hand side that are interspersed in the lawn, I think it would go a long ways towards tying the development in, in, in a, in a more subtle and interesting way. And also consistent with, I think what you're used to seeing even in Manchester and nearby communities where very, there are some very large homes. And they often feature specimen scale trees in their front yards that do provide foreground and a connection with the more natural kind of setting. So I, I totally support that. It's kind of de-formalizing the, the look of this landscape and, and trying to tie it in better with, with the, with what we see as the, the existing natural growth. It would have, and Leslie's completely right. I think in order to facilitate that earlier on, it would require construction of some additional, smaller, much smaller scale retaining walls that could provide a sufficient flat area to start a bigger tree. But I think in the longer run, creating a, a landscape that really, a foreground landscape that features specimen scale trees ultimately, I think would, would help a lot.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I'm okay. Thank you.
I'm good, sir.
Okay. Patrice Murphy, you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In our architect's rendering, the lawn area above the entrance view is depicted as wildflowers, which is consistent with the applicant's, which is inconsistent with the applicant's drawings. And he's drawn that attention to that. The landscaper Leslie described it as meadow grasses, but Mr. Engler called it sea grasses. On the surface, this all appears to appeal to the appetite for the environmental concerns of this community. But I would like to know more definitively how the applicant intends to maintain this large wildflower or meadow grass or however they're calling it. Specifically, will it be native wildflower mixes? Will the meadow be mown or brush cut periodically? Or will it be allowed to progress to an early successional meadow with trees and eventually forest? And if that's the intention, how deep is the soil in this area over the blasted ledge to support larger trees? Related to that, with such a large disturbance area over a long period of time, I'm concerned that this is an area ripe for invasive species to take hold and then to spread to our conservation area. Invasives often come in with construction equipment. And I'm concerned about the invasive species such as tree of heaven, Japanese knotweed, Japanese stilt grass, glossy buckthorn, garlic mustard. These are all tough to get rid of once they're established. So I would urge the board to have the developers specify the seed mix if they're using native perennial mix to specify a maintenance plan and to include non-herbicidal control of invasive species throughout both the construction and afterwards.
Thank you. Mr. Engler? Or Leslie?
Is there a question?
Yeah, can, can somebody specify what's going to be used?
Well, well, we, we've heard a lot of comments on that part of the site. So let us, you know, take a, a full pass at the whole thing. And as part of that, we'll come back. I mean, my, you know, listen, I'm not a landscape architect. So I'll certainly, I, I have an excellent one, but my preference would be to leave that as, you know, once it's planted and whatnot, untouched, undisturbed. And, and natural as possible. We certainly recognize the concern about invasive species. And we'll take that under consideration. But let us, let us huddle amongst ourselves and the next iteration of the landscaping plan will, will specify that area and also consider some of the other things that we've heard from both Mr. Bomer, the board and members of the public.
Thank you. So given that, when are we going to be, be prepared to revisit this? On May 25th, which is two weeks from now, or June 6th?
I can say for certain we'll have the response, the written response next week, Madam Chair. I don't want to put my landscape architect on the spot, but as we're, I think we're just doing some modifications to a plan. So I would hope, I mean, I, I also want to be sensitive. You know, I don't want to drop this on the board or the peer reviewer the day of the hearing, unlike the MECT. So, you know, we could, I could say without question, we'll be ready the first hearing of June and we'll give Cliff, you know, a couple of weeks to look at it. Or I can say we'll endeavor to provide it, you know, by the end of next week at the earliest. In which case, you know, Cliff and the board will only have a couple of days. So it's really, I guess, up to the board.
So Mr. Bomer, does June 8th make more sense than May 25th?
It does, although June 8th in particular is not an evening that works for me for a hearing. It certainly wouldn't, it gives me the time to review materials and certainly issue another letter. But I may not be able to attend the hearing on that day.
Well, at this point in time, we have only three dates remaining. May 25th, June 8th and June 22nd to conclude all of our business on this public hearing. Unless Mr. Engler wants to give us an extension.
For what it's worth, the 22nd does work for me. June 22nd does.
Okay. I see there's another member of the public that has their hand raised. Karen Gersh. You're muted. You're still muted. We can't hear you.
There, okay.
Sorry, I got my camera up, but I forgot to turn my sound on. Um, just to say, um, I have been listening uh, each and every meeting and um, haven't made any comments because I was waiting to hear if there was anything different that maybe I could add, uh, that people haven't already asked or haven't responded to. I I keep saying to myself that my common sense tells me the project is improbable for this site. And I realize that forty B affordable housing uh, should fit in with the neighborhood in some way. I don't see this fitting in with this neighborhood, that's for sure. Um, that's not to say somewhere else, but not on top of this hill. Um, I heard a comment earlier from uh, Leslie when she was describing um, the architecture, the landscape architecture of the site and how it's surrounded by uh, forever perpetuity, the open landscape and natural landscape all around. Well, there was a rock down Old School Street that has a plaque on it that's been there probably for a hundred and fifty years. It says that that land is supposed to be kept open forever for people to enjoy. And this project is like putting a ziggurat on top of this hill and uh, calling it whatever you want to call it, a housing uh, place uh, that really doesn't belong there. And it is destroying the natural beauty and peace that has been there for a very long time. My family's woodlot uh, is directly down the back slope of what would have been uh, I think, the leaching field for their sewage system. So I'm glad they're considering that Manchester perhaps accept their sewage. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. Um, if it doesn't happen, I don't think they have proven that the site um, won't take a sewer system. I think there's more studying involved, some more soil testing certainly in various parts of the site that they have never done. Um, I have so many questions. And when I think um, about this road going up one way and ending at at a cul-de-sac for all these people up there, if there's a fire, if there's any emergency whatsoever, a hundred-year storm, I don't know what could come along. We have weird weather uh, these days. Perhaps they can look at their road design if they're pushing to put this thing up there, that the road could go up one way as an entrance and come out another way as an exit. Perhaps they have more room for that. I've seen that done in other places where a motel may have a way up one way and a way down the other way. Um, what else was I going to say? Um, I'm just concerned about the retaining walls, the height of the retaining walls and runoff uh, from storms. Uh, you know, he's got the thing designed for a twenty-five-year storm, but you know what? Lately, our storms are not normal quote-unquote twenty-five-year storms. Um, I think there's more uh, that needs to be done on that. Um, and the reduction of wetland. I don't know if this is going to happen now or not. I'm sorry, I didn't see the most recent letter uh, that was written by, I don't know, the speaker who took a lot of time tonight. That you are reducing the wetland area from a hu- from a hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet to a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. And I don't know how reducing wetland area can end up being a benefit. In fact, I do not see one benefit to the town of Manchester from this project, not one. No one has discussed the impact on the school system. No one has talked about safety of traffic children perhaps on bicycles or foot back and forth over one-twenty-eight. No one has talked about how to put a sewer system under one-twenty-eight and connect them. And where is all the runoff uh, going to go into the storm drains? Do we have storm drains out that way? Um, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. And um, I just wanted to let you know, that's where I'm at, and that's my opinion. And I think the project for this site is a terrible idea. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Um, George Davis.
Yeah, um, thank you. Thank you, Chair Mellish. You know, the state has a handbook regarding design review of forty B proposals, and that handbook points to a section of the implementation regulations for the law, and you're you're probably well aware of that. What I'd like to emphasize now is that the regulations indicate that approval of the project depends on satisfying certain criteria, including the site being quote generally appropriate for residential development, unquote. And the quote, project design is generally appropriate for the site. And the regulations enumerate some considerations that include building massing, topography, and integration into existing development patterns. This proposed development in no way satisfies those criteria in that the site is not generally appropriate for residential development. There is no residential development existing or intended in the area of the site. And even if the site were suitable, the project is inappropriate for the site, considering the massiveness of the building and the topography, which places the building on a pinnacle rather than in any sense integrating into an existing development pattern. So this proposed project has more than more than three strikes against it, and I think it should it should not be where it is supposed to be. I think it needs to be rejected by the by the ZBA. And I'd just like to close with a question. Do I understand correctly that the Housing Appeals Committee will be using these very same criteria, among others, if the project ends up under their review?
They they will be looking at the conditions we've issued and whether it makes the project uneconomically feasible.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes, Mr. Pucci.
Hi, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Pucci. I I just wanted to note that um, uh, those are relevant considerations under the regulations that that would be um, under considera- under consideration at the Housing Appeals Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Luke Legere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere, McGregor Legere and Stevens on behalf of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing. Uh, just just a couple of quick comments. I appreciate Mr. Boomer's uh, letters and comments tonight. Uh, we certainly agree with his point that the fully accessible sidewalk is is not optional. I think the Architectural Access Board has made that quite clear. Uh, but I did note that the sidewalk wasn't shown, at least not that I saw on any of the applicant's renderings and and to the extent it has been shown on plans, I think the details are still fairly sketchy. Um, so I would just note for the board that it may be useful to certainly get more information in the long term uh, on that sidewalk and its design, but it also might be useful in the architectural review to understand exactly where that would be and how it would look in the context of some of the renderings we saw. Um, al- also, we certainly agree strongly with Mr. Boomer's comments about the need for additional information with respect to retaining walls, um, design, construction, and material. Uh, as we heard from the applicant's architect, from certain angles, the retaining walls may be all that one sees from street level. Um, yeah, I I know that the renderings that were provided by the applicant really aren't from street level. I understand they're going to be providing those. Um, but certainly aesthetically, they're important. Uh, they're also, you know, that sort of information and detail is also important for a number of others. There are a lot of other implications that those retaining walls have on public health and safety and and other considerations that are highly relevant to the board. So um, the same goes to for Mr. Boomer's comments about the need for more information on cut and fill. Uh, I raise that because these are issues and and requests for more information that I've heard, I think, several times now. Unless I missed something, I haven't heard any kind of a commitment from the applicant to providing that additional information. Uh, so we would request that the board, if not already, do formally request that additional information on the retaining walls and cut and fill and ask the applicant to commit to providing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legere. Uh, Matt Plum, could you please state your name and address?
Thank you, Chair Mellish. Uh, I'm Matt Plum, President of the Board of MECT. I am not a Manchester resident. I am an Essex resident in one-thirty Rocky Hill Road. Uh, may I be permitted to speak?
Yes.
Uh, applicant Engler contends that his monolithic block apartment building fits within the typology as defined by mass housing of Shingle Place Hill and environs because there are no abutting buildings or neighbors. I believe he is resort to this rhetorical fallacy because this structure is both grossly out of keeping in scale with other buildings in the town of Manchester, where indeed the immediate area save perhaps the schools. As President of MECT, I'd like to state that the MECT Board and I believe it is precisely the typology of this area that makes this project so obviously and uniquely inappropriate and invasive. He proposes to cut, blast, and bulldoze his project into pristine woodlands at the edge of hundreds of acres of conservation and watershed lands, forever changing the character of that area and perhaps indeed the town. I respectfully ask for these reasons and the many concerns raised throughout this public hearing process that the ZBA consider extremely carefully before issuing any permit for this project, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Um, ASBJ, would you please state your name and address?
Hi. Yeah. Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Alana Stewart Bell-Jakes, and I'm at twenty-five Masconomo Street here in Manchester by the Sea. And I am a just a citizen here.
Okay.
And um, I work and live here, and I, my biggest question is actually a concern about the fact that we keep calling this affordable housing. Um, from what I've heard, there's only going to be thirty-six out of units out of all of them that would be quote-unquote affordable. Um, the number I've heard tossed around is about two thousand dollars a month, which for a lot of people is still not affordable. Um, and so if they're going to be, you know, going on this affordable thing, I guess my biggest issue is um, you know, what are we actually looking at? You know, are they going to be um, making a whole bunch of money off of the other units because they have this beautiful uh, view of the conservation lands around them? Um, and you know, what are they going to be doing to actually helping our issues of having a housing concern for, you know, graduating seniors who are just starting out here from town or seniors who want to continue living in the area, um, but you know, don't happen to own their own home perhaps. Um, there's a lot of people who live and work here that, you know, don't have access to affordable housing, which has been the big issue here in town, and I don't see this project meeting that. And I would love to uh, hear about that concern more. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, under the forty B statute, they're required to have twenty-five percent of the units at eighty percent of AMI. Which many people feel is not affordable. Um, Sarah Pierce, please state your name and address.
Ah, yes, Sarah Pierce of Nine Friends Street, Manchester. I first wanted to say that I agree with and applaud everything that Karen Gersh had to say, and she brought up a lot of issues that I think a lot of people are feeling and I haven't had the opportunity to express. Um, a question I have that just remains and is concerning is that throughout this meeting and many others, Jeffrey Engler continues to tell us that we're not going to be able to have a finished plan within the timeframe. He's allotting the town and the board. And that's super concerning because if we don't have a finished plan, I don't understand how a board could vote on something that could change so drastically in so many ways. Um, and I guess that would be my biggest concern and question and comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Maury Creighton, would you please state your name and address?
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Maury Creighton, thirty-seven Proctor Street, also a member of the Finance Committee. And I really just sort of have a comment on this tonight. And I hope that the ZBA and also the Board of Selectmen would carefully consider the request of SLV in this proposed project uh, for its hookup to the town's septic treatment plant. Um, taxpayers of the town of Manchester have been supporting significant capital efforts over the last eight to ten years to repair sewer pipes and infrastructure for the town and ultimately to increase the working capacity of our treatment plant. After this time, effort, and expenditure of taxpayer dollars, it just seems wrong to have SLV in this proposed project move right to the head of the line for hookup to the sewer treatment plant. Um, other areas of the town I think should be considered first. For example, the Singing Beach House. Uh, it's not currently on the septic system, and a problem in this area would have a significant environmental impact for the town, not to mention impacting town residents, out-of-town visitors, and revenue realized by our town merchants. Um, other areas I think should be considered for hookup include Old Neck Road, Beach Street, Masconomo Street, Smith's Point, Proctor Street, and connected areas that are not currently on the system, and they really should be considered because they're in environmentally sensitive areas. On the other side of the harbor, Harbor Street, Tux Point, Boardman Ave, also candidates to join the septic system, and they also too directly uh, border environmentally sensitive areas. Just seems the current residents and taxpayers who have for years been supporting capital repairs to the sewer infrastructure are being kind of left on the sidelines here while this proposed project steps right to the head of the line. I sincerely hope that the newly named Select Board and the ZBA will take this into consideration and delay the hookup for this large proposed project and allow careful consideration of other needed sewer connections here in our town. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um. Daniel Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, Dan Hill, I represent the MECT. Uh, I just want to make a quick rebuttal uh, to some of the comments that Mr. Engler was making concerning our artistic renderings of the uh, project and and how it may look from public realm. Um, Mr. Engler uh, stated that his uh, renderings are much are superior because they're based upon photographs. Uh, whereas uh, MECTs are not, they're based upon um, the renderings. Uh, and I wanted to point out, if I may, Madam Chair, using the share screen function, uh, that Mr. Engler actually used uh, similar artistic renderings in his Winchester project uh, that's currently under construction. Uh, this is one uh, such photograph uh, rendering, and this is another rendering of the entrance to his project in Winchester. So it's not, I I just want to make a point that it's, there's two ways of doing this. You don't have to do it using photographs. You can certainly use it uh, using other other types of of study. Um, second, the um, comment about the landscaping being incorporated into the renderings, I I think that's a legitimate point. Um, certainly uh, the 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 rendering that we provided does not show the plants that are proposed on the retaining walls. Um, however, I did want to point out that 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 including the landscaping features uh, on the renderings assumes that those landscaping features will survive. Uh, and that and that's that's an assumption that doesn't always play itself out. And uh, finally, yeah, I frankly, I think our renderings are are superior in that they provide um, relevant views, viewpoints of the project. Uh, whereas two of the three renderings that were provided by Mr. Engler are frankly irrelevant. One, one of which is is very far down the street on School Street, making the view of the project virtually uh, invisible. Uh, and the second one uh, is a perspective from basically the middle of the woods on Old School Street that's screened by existing trees on abutting properties. Uh, in contrast, the renderings that we provided are from are from relevant uh, public vantage points. Um, and if for that reason, I think they're they're worth a lot more on the credibility scale. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to move move on to the environmental peer review waiver requests. Do we have somebody from Beals and Thomas on to speak to?
Yes, Stacy Minahan here with Beals and Thomas, and I'm joined by Andrew Gorman and Yes, Stacy Minahan here with Beals and Thomas, and I'm joined by Andrew Gorman and Matt Cody of our office as well.
Thank you, Stacy.
So would you like me to give an overview?
Yes, please.
Sure. So just by way of kind of a reminder of where we've been, we had received responses to our initial review letter in early April, and in later April, we issued our supplemental review letter. And there are a few main items that remain outstanding that I thought it would be most beneficial to discuss tonight because that information will also have an impact on the waiver review as well. So I'll, I'll go through that. I also wanted to mention that we have visited the site several times with the proponents representatives conducting the wildlife study. And we're awaiting that wildlife study report, after which we'll review it. And then after I go through kind of the main remaining items, I thought it might make sense to see if there's anything else that the board or the applicant wants to discuss of our comments. And then if you'd like, we can certainly go through kind of a line-by-line comment or a line-by-line of the waivers, you know, whatever your preference is. So with that, we acknowledge the projects now connecting to the municipal sewer system, so that's what our latest review is based on. I also wanted to note, because there's been some discussion of that sidewalk this evening. So we generally reviewed a conceptual sidewalk that we had seen plans for, but we haven't seen a design. So I did just want to specify that any sidewalk is not encompassed in our current engineering review. So, you know, if there is going to be a sidewalk, we'd want to review it for stormwater and impervious and is it in a resource area and all those other pieces. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the board. So then in terms of remaining comments, there I think is one more vernal pool that was found on the property that just needs to be added to the plans. We did ask the applicant to provide additional information documenting how the project will not impact the hydrology of vernal pools. So they've looked kind of at as a wetland basis design point, and we just think that there's some more information warranted to look at the vernal pool hydrology. We also had asked for some construction management information and certainly fully acknowledging that construction management and means and methods are not necessarily specified during the design process, but there are a couple spots, one in particular for the kind of ledge outcrop above the Wetland A series that has several vernal pools where the steepness of the slope and the fact that they're going to be coming over the crest of the hill with, you know, removing ledge. We just, we're hoping to get some more details on how that would be accomplished to avoid impacts to the vernal pool, you know, directly at the base of that slope. There is, we had asked for isolated land subject to flooding calculations for, I believe it was the C series feature, which we acknowledge is small and it has not held water during our site visits, but the Order of Resource Area Delination that approved the Wetland Resource Areas did specify that not all wetland resource areas on the site were investigated, and I think we had seen commentary somewhere in the project files that, you know, to truly determine whether or not that feature is a state-regulated ILSF would require an ILSF calculation, and we do agree with that, that that's the, the way to tell. And so we do think for the administrative record that that calculation should be provided to confirm that it's not indeed a state resource area. And then the final item was the FEMA Zone A line has been added to the plan set. What we are really looking for as opposed to showing it on the plans, although it's, it's great that it's on there, is, so the FEMA has mapped just a Zone A, which does not have an elevation determined, and we're just looking for the applicant to provide some narrative or documentation as to why they think a study to establish the base flood elevation is not needed. You know, looking at the proposed work in the context of where FEMA maps the Zone A line, so we're just looking for that probably more for the administrative record, but just so that we have something to review and some information as to why or why not the base flood elevation, you know, should or should not be determined. And those were really our only remaining comments. So it's, you know, essentially six items, I think if I hit them all correctly. And I don't know if, if it's the Chair's pleasure to see if the, you know, proponent has any questions on those or thoughts or questions on anything else from our review letter before we move on.
Thank you. Mr. Engler?
Thank you. Once again, we appreciate Beals and Thomas's diligence and professionalism. We are, you know, the letter they submitted was, there's a lot in it, and we've been attending to it as soon as we received it, and we hope to have a response in the next several days that we can bounce back to the board and to Beals and Thomas. I think most of the clarification and additional information we'll be providing for one, I mean, for one, the ILSF, we did all those calcs, it was way under the threshold, we'll be producing that. So I screamed and yelled about the CMP. I still feel strongly about my position, but I did reach out to a contract, two contractors. One had no interest, but another one is going to be endeavoring to provide some guidance on how, you know, we would approach the, the club blasting and site work of the site while not negatively impacting the vernal pool series A. So we, we hope to have something for that before we close the public hearing. But in general, we're going to be submitting a comprehensive response to Beals and Thomas. We submitted, I don't know if they're aware, we submitted, you know, an updated civil plan set today in response to the, we, we have these two tracks going, as Beals and Thomas knows, we got the civil in sight and we have the environmental. We responded to the Beals and Thomas civil letter that took several weeks to respond to as well as Mr. Chesia and Mr. Horsley's comments. So those were all submitted today, and we will be endeavoring to submit, you know, updated plans on the environmental track to Beals and Thomas. But we hope to have a full written response and associated exhibits, I would say, next week at the latest.
What, do you have a sense of when the wildlife study report will be issued?
I believe Goddard Consulting is on, if Ryan or Scott has a sense of when that may be completed.
Yes, hi there, Madam Chair. Ryan Rosine with Goddard Consulting. For the wildlife study, we're planning on hopefully the around the first of June, hopefully. You know, there's a lot to go into it, so we're taking our time with them. We want to be as thorough as possible. And we know we need to let you guys have, and Beals and Thomas have enough time to review it and respond to it. So hopefully around the first of June, within that first week of June, is what, is what we're currently planning.
Okay.
And to the, to the response letter that Jeff was just talking about, in the next few days, by the end of next week at the latest, we'll have that back to the board.
End of next week. Okay. So is it worth discussing any of the waiver requests, or should we wait until we have all the information we need? Stacy?
I'm actually going to call on my colleague Andrew. I don't know, Andrew, if there are, I know, you know, the ones that are sticking out in my mind are kind of the vernal pool waiver requests, and we've asked to kind of see that and have some more information just to see how necessary it is. I don't know if there's any of the waiver requests though that are worth discussing tonight.
Perhaps none discreetly, if I may, but I, if we could just summarize a point of a couple of our waivers. One of the things that we are continuing to push for is a greater, greater specificity and understanding. Is there a path for this project to still be reviewable under the bylaw and be permissible? Rather than applying kind of a wholesale waiver and only reviewing the project under the Wetlands Protection Act through the Conservation Commission. So in addition to some of the items that we've discussed, that's kind of a trailing thread through our commentary and the waiver requests. So that's something that we'll be looking for the applicant's response on to see, you know, what alternatives were evaluated and how, once we have those delineated vernal pools now shown on the plan, that factors into the potential alternatives analysis. But in summary, that's a common thread through our waiver comments.
And if I may add to that, Madam Chair, you know, to that end, one thing that might be helpful is, you know, obviously the waiver request if it's needed to allow the project. So, you know, if you, if you don't get a particular waiver request spelling out what that means for the project, you know, we lose this many units, or we can't do this portion of the building, or, you know, whatever it is that is the thing that is affected, I think would help the review of the waiver requests as well.
So you want, what, what is, what is impacted in the project?
Yeah, and I'll let Andrew weigh in, you know, if he feels differently or has anything to add on to it, but I think that would be helpful. I mean, that's what we are going to be looking at in the plans is what is the aspect of the project that's affected? But to the extent that the proponent wants to spell it out, that will just make our review easier.
Yep, I, I think you definitely captured that, Stacy. I, there's a lot of statements in the waiver request which reflect the project being unbuildable should the standards of the bylaw, particularly those related to vernal pools be applied. So we're just looking for scenarios where if this is reduced by fifty percent of the vernal pool setback, you know, could this still be a viable project, or if not, what is lost out of the design? So those are the type of commentary that we're looking to review.
Yeah, I, I can short circuit that, we can provide it, but as, as Beals and Thomas knows, it's not the building, it's our access. And, and put simply, if we don't get the waivers, we can't build the road. And if we can't build the road, we don't lose one unit or ten units, we lose one hundred and thirty-six units. So we can affix that to all the wa, to the waivers that that impacts, but it'll be very redundant. It relates to the book, to the, to, I mean, not every waiver, but most of the waivers, as Beals and Thomas knows, the proximity of, it's the roadway and some infrastructure to the vernal pools, not the building. So frequently on 40Bs, oh, chop off half the building, or you can lose ten units or whatever. That, that, the, the density of our building has, I mean, I would say almost no relevance to most of the waiver requests. It's accessing the building. And if you get access to the building, we can't, you know, we, it'd be an easy, uneconomic debate. It's, it's, there's no project.
Understood, and I think just linking that to the waivers that it does go with so that, you know, we don't have to write it in on the waiver request in our review of it would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that. I think, well, as I said, Stacy, we're responding to the written, your April 26th letter. So within that letter, we'll just try to provide a little bit more, you know, what's the impact of, of not granting the waiver? I mean, I, I think we've done that to some degree, but obviously maybe not as clearly or as thoroughly as we could. And, and we'll do that, understanding there'll be a lot of redundancy.
Thank you. So if the wildlife habitat study is released the first week of June, we need that to continue with the environmental, is that correct?
Yes, our plan is-
Yeah, well, that's a, I'm sorry, that's a, I think that's a different kind of, I mean, we have to get through this letter and our responses and satisfy Beals and Thomas. The wildlife study is a, you know, is a different study entirely that will require Beals and Thomas's, you know, a separate and distinct review. I don't speak for them, but at least that's our kind of perspective.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's right, Madam Chair. I think once the wildlife study is released, we're planning on kind of, we've already, like I said, been to the site several times and discussed the methodologies that are being undertaken and agree with them. But once the report's issued, then we'll go to the site in the context of reviewing the report and issue a separate letter addressing the wildlife habitat, was our planned approach.
So the end of next week to get the response on the rest of the environmental stuff would be May twentieth. Can we circle back around on the environmental on June eighth?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to open up the calendar. So instead of the meeting on the 25th, since we're not getting comments until next week, you're saying the eighth, Madam Chair?
Yes, does that work?
I think that should be doable. That's essentially two weeks if I'm looking at the calendar correctly.
Yes, yeah, it's two weeks, yeah, two and a half weeks, but we'd want it in two weeks.
Yeah.
We like to get it before the weekend.
Right.
For the meeting to give us, we have a lot of people who work full-time.
Yeah, I think that works. I'll check our internal schedules and make sure we can, but I imagine that we would be able to.
Okay. So on May 25th, we can't do architectural, we can't do environmental, we can circle back around on civil engineering?
We should be able to finish that off, I would hope. I mean, we submitted a fairly comprehensive response. We submitted an updated drainage analysis, we submitted updated plans, we submitted an updated letter. You know, we, even though we're really not under any obligation to, in response to the board's request, we submitted a response to Mr. Chesia and Mr. Horsley's comment letters. So, you know, I think we, and, and that still gives us two full weeks prior to the 25th, so I, I think that's probably a reasonable use of that evening.
And I also think we'll perhaps circle back around on some of the waivers, zoning waivers, you know, size of car spaces, some of those other aspects, and circle back around on traffic and safety.
Respectfully, I thought we were done with traffic and safety. And I think the board itself, you took a vote, and I thought most of the members said they were or you're just revisiting it from a waiver standpoint. I, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, it's your show, but I just want to make sure we're prepared, and I, I thought we had closed the book on, on traffic.
Um, it's my understanding you're waiting for information for us with respect to second egress.
No, we, we closed the book on that, Madam Chair. We, we looked at that, we submitted a memo that we were not providing a second means of egress.
The board has not taken a vote on that, Mr. Engler. We have not discussed any of the results of conditions we might wish to attach to this project. So you may be saying no, but we have not voted as a board.
Oh, I apologize. I, I interpreted your comment to say that you were expecting us to analyze the second means of egress. It's, it's internal conversation, of course, by all means.
But we, I mean, we have to make some progress on conditions and waiver requests.
I think that would be a great use of time, Madam Chair. I don't, I, I was just confused. I don't want the board expecting something of me and me be confused by what you're asking. We, from, from our perspective relative to our traffic supplemental, we believe we've given you everything you need. Your interpretation or your internal discussion of that, a hundred percent, that, you know.
That's correct. We don't need any additional information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Anything else that the board wants us to put on the agenda for the May 25th meeting? Dan Hill, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. I, I have a few process questions and comments to make, and I don't-
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I have a few process questions and comments to make and I don't know if this is the right time.
I don't have a clue what you're trying to say, so I don't know.
I, I have some, I have some comments on process. I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about. The fact we only have three sessions of the public hearing left. Um. The applicant just advised tonight that hopefully they might have the wildlife study done by June 1st. Um, that doesn't leave a lot of time to turn that around, to have that reviewed by your peer review consultants. And then to have a, a debate and a discussion amongst yourselves. There's also really still a lot of outstanding issues on, on civil engineering, which I understand will be addressed on May 25th. Um, I haven't heard any update from the applicant in terms of a sewer capacity analysis. This was addressed at the last meeting.
That's going to take eight weeks. That's going to be. June 22nd.
Well, what, what's your last hearing date? I thought that was.
It's currently June 22nd, so we'll have to reevaluate. To date, Mr. Engler has not agreed to let us extend it. Um, and if he's not going to let us extend it and we're not going to receive information to the last night, either we can't grant waivers. Um. Or, you know, it will impact the conditions we apply.
Right.
I mean, I, I can't, I can't force Mr. Engler or the peer reviewers. To get me stuff by a certain date if they can't get it done. Uh, you know, we're doing the best we can, but. If, if we run out of time, we run out of time and we will do our conditions accordingly.
No, I understand and I, I fully appreciate. The predicament. Um, it's unfortunate that we don't have more time. Um, I, you know, I, I would like an opportunity if I could either on. June 22nd or, or a prior night to provide a summation because we have some, some ideas and thoughts on how those conditions would look like. Uh, on all these issues, including the traffic issues and sewer and so forth. Um, usually the last couple of sessions of a public hearing. Are dedicated to reviewing draft conditions. Uh, Mr. Boomer can attest to that. He's been privy to a lot of these discussions. Um, you're already down to three meetings left and we haven't, we, we, we don't have a draft decision yet, so. I, I'm very concerned about the amount of substantive work that's left to be done and. Not having enough time at the end to review draft conditions and have a debate over them. So I, I'm not, I don't have any, I don't have a solution. I'm, I'm just raising the concern. And I would, I guess, encourage Mr. Engler to reconsider his, his stance on no more extensions of the public hearing.
Um, so June 8th, we have available to deal. With conditions and waiver requests. Um, Mr. Pucci. Um, am I correct that once we close the public hearing? The board can consider conditions and waivers in open meetings? But not take input from the public?
Yes, once you uh vote to close the hearing. And, and if you are forced to close the hearing by the 22nd, you will have to, to close the hearing that night. Uh, then you will have um deliberations which will be at a publicly noticed public meeting. But you will not be um able to receive input from anybody. Including the applicant, third parties or anybody else. It would just be amongst the board members and council to. Deliberate on a decision and that decision could be. A denial of the project or it could be an approval of the project with conditions. And with uh decisions on waiver requests. And to the extent a waiver isn't specifically granted, it will be denied. So, um, I, and, and one last thing I have to add since you asked a question. Is, you know, I, I echo what Attorney Hill is saying at this point. It, it is always a good idea. To have public hearing open. You know, while you're at the stage that you can start to talk uh back and forth. Uh, with the applicant, hear from the public or everybody else about potential draft conditions. Um, if you're forced to close the hearing, you have to have that discussion entirely amongst yourselves. So what I recommend you do is, um. Uh, if the applicant is sticking to that, that the hearing absolutely has to be closed by June 22. I would recommend you use those final three hearing sessions to just gather as much information as you possibly can. On the issues that have been raised. And then you'll have to deliberate on a decision amongst yourselves, again, in a publicly noticed. Meeting just without the ability for anybody to provide any further input. And you'll have 40 days to issue the decision following the close of a public hearing. So you would have at least. You'd have a chance for at least a couple of meetings of deliberations, you know, um, in that, in that timeframe.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy Minahan.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to confirm schedule. So civil engineering hearing, May 25th. The next environmental hearing, June 8th. Um, is the expectation that we will have reviewed the wildlife study if it's received? Prior to then, I'm just thinking June 1st, if we get it right at the beginning of the. Of June, that is a tight turnaround. Um, we very well may be able to do it, but I just wanted to mention that in key. It sounds like there's one more hearing on the 22nd after that.
Yep, 22nd is the last one, yeah.
So we'll do our best for the 8th if we get it ahead of the 8th. Um. And we'll keep the board apprised of the progress.
Okay.
If, if I may interject on that, Madam Chair, uh, perhaps we schedule the site walk prior to the issue of the report, not have the site rock. Before the uh report is issued, but we can coordinate with Goddard Consulting to have a date set up to get boots on the ground. Um, as soon as it's issued.
Okay, great.
Uh, Sarah, Sarah, I'm sorry. It, it would be nice to have Conservation Commission be able to weigh in. To you as well. Uh, they might have done that, you know, offline or, or maybe they want to submit something in writing. But I just wanted to throw that out there that. To the extent you're, you know, it's, it's speak now or forever hold your peace as to the local uh wetlands bylaw and regulations, so. You're going to have to stand in their shoes with regard to any uh waiver request. So in addition to your peer review. Uh, which is, you know, hugely valuable, obviously. Uh, I, I would just. We, we should just reach out again to the Conservation Commission Chair and, and Agent to make sure that they're. Aware of the state of the, you know, evidence at this stage and give them, give them another chance to weigh in. Um, on, on the local bylaw issues. You're, you're acting in their seed.
Yep.
Uh, Patrice Murphy.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a, a question that keeps coming up either uh from our membership or just in locally talking to the community. And that is more about the affordable housing and whether the affordable units will include Section 8 housing. I'm not sure if you can answer that or direct that to.
I can't answer that.
Mr. Pucci, perhaps?
No, I think that's, it would be done on whatever the fair housing plan was done by the developer.
Right, you, you just, Sarah, just to weigh in on that. You, you very ably summed that up earlier when, when you said if he meets affordability requirements, he's an eligible applicant. And then beyond there, you really can't get into, um. Like you, you can't impose more stringent requirements on the applicant if, if he's satisfying. Uh, the, you know, the basics to be an eligible 40B applicant. So, you know, it, it, that seems counterintuitive. I know, but, but that, that is the way. So you, you sort of answered that early on in the meeting in response to another question.
Okay. So at this point. I will make a motion. To. Continue the public hearing. On the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC. Um, at School Street Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18. Filed with the town clerk on September 27th, 2021. To continue it to a date certain of May 25th at 7 o'clock PM. Um, and we will do hopefully the final peer review on civil engineering. And we'll look at various conditions and waivers on. Aspects of the project in which we have information. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds it. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian. Brian? Jim?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Thank you. We will now move to administrative matters. Um.
I'm going to say goodnight, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George.
Goodnight.
Night, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
So. We received minutes this week. Did anybody review them?
I looked at them, Sarah, and I did not find, I did not check in for spelling or grammar, but I found them to be representative of what was discussed.
I agree with Jim, Sarah.
Okay, can I have a motion? To approve those minutes?
I will move that the minutes be approved as written and submitted.
Can you state the dates?
Uh, I would accept, I'm in a position now where I don't have everything available to me, so maybe I will.
I can.
Somebody else then.
I can do it.
Good, thank you.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the minutes dated March 9th, 2022 and April 5th, 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Jim will second. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian. Jim.
Approved.
Sean.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
Okay. Um. Anything else? That we need to discuss that I didn't anticipate?
About our sanity.
Other than the fact we're running out of time.
Running out of battery.
I have a question, Sarah. It relates to the running out of time. Is, um, is Town Council? Assisting with the drafting of this or is it all us?
No, Town Council.
Yeah.
Town Council will be providing the initial draft.
Fantastic, I like that.
I think he's the one best equipped to do it. But we're going to have to go through. All of the conditions and waivers and decide what we're doing.
Yeah, it might take some time.
Right, exactly.
Forty days.
Forty days to get it filed with the town clerk. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Second.
Everyone wave their hand if they agree.
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 Thank you all.
Good night, Sarah.
Sorry, it was so long.